...of the City Council Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency Housing Authority, regular meeting to order, if you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Jeff, do we have any changes to the order of the agenda?
Nothing this evening, Mr. Chair.
From my colleagues on the dais, anybody have any suggestions on changes to the order of the agenda? Then we will go with the published agenda. Greg, do we have any report from closed session?
There's no report from closed session, but we did not complete it, so we are going to reconvene into the closed session after the regular meeting concludes.
Thank you, Greg. That brings us to item five, a series of presentations, starting with the first one of presenting a proclamation recognizing September 2019 as Pain Awareness Month, even though this is sort of the end of the month. I believe Michelle Rice is here. Hi, Michelle. Why don't we, why don't you join me up at the podium? Sure. I will give you a chance to speak in a minute, but before I hand you this proclamation, for the benefit of everybody in the audience and people watching us at home, when Michelle first approached me about declaring September to be Pain Awareness Month in San Carlos, it's a topic that's near and dear to my heart. As many of you or some of you may know, I took up motorcycle riding a few years ago, and I cunningly arranged, six months into my riding career, to get into a pretty severe accident, and I was at Stanford for about a week, having them fix all the broken ribs on my right side. I managed to break every one of them. The interesting thing that I learned there about pain management is they had to put me on OxyContin in order to make sure I would continue breathing. You think breathing is a natural phenomenon that you will do regardless, but it turns out that's not always necessarily the case. I actually had some fairly severe, even though I was only on the drug for a few weeks, I actually had some fairly severe difficulties getting off of it, and I will never forget, as long as I live, staring at that bottle of pills up on the table, feeling very, very gray. The world looked kind of totally gray, feeling very, very gray, and looking at that bottle going, you know, if I pop one of those pills, I'm going to feel a lot better in about half an hour. That was the point at which I took the bottle of pills and brought it down to the police department and disposed of it in the thing, and gave my wife direction to never allow anybody to put me on OxyContin again. That's not the point of this thing. The main point I want to make to everybody is, pain is a really big issue. Managing it is very important, because you need to manage pain in order to have a successful life or to recover from problems, but you also have to be careful about how you end up doing it, and if you end up in difficulties, please get help. There are plenty of resources out there available for helping you either with the pain or with getting over the pain, getting over the treatment for the pain. So, Michelle, with that, here's this proclamation. Thank you very much for bringing this matter to our attention, and I'll turn the microphone over to you. You can use this one, doesn't cut out as much. That'd be a good idea. Thanks.
Okay. Hello, everyone. My name is Michelle Rice, and I'm a U.S. Pain Foundation Ambassador and Patient Advocate. People with pain are often afraid to speak about their experiences because of stigma and even shame, but sharing our stories, whether with loved ones, coworkers, clinicians, or policymakers, is essential to creating awareness and positive change. For Pain Awareness Month this year, U.S. Pain Foundation is focusing its efforts around the theme, "Let's Talk About Pain." Tonight, I'm going to share some of my own pain journey with you. As you watch me or listen to me speak, I may look healthy, but I actually live with an intractable pain condition. The morning of September 21st, 2000, I was a happy, healthy, fourth-grade school teacher with a bright future ahead of me that was filled with hopes and dreams. Later that afternoon, the custodian mopped the floor in front of my classroom, but failed to put up any signs or cones to warn people of the wet floor. In the seconds that it took for me to slip and fall, I joined the club that I never wanted to be a part of. I became one of the 50 million Americans living with chronic pain. My fall led to a rare condition called reflex sympathetic dystrophy, also known as complex regional pain syndrome. It's the most painful condition known to man. The pain is rated higher than nonterminal cancer, amputation of a digit, and even childbirth. It's been around since the Civil War, and there is no cure. Over the next several years, I would need the use of a wheelchair. I became bedridden, living in my childhood bedroom at my parents' house, and I couldn't drive. To say I was over-medicated would be an understatement, but despite all the medications, I was still in excruciating pain. The pain was so severe that I could not wear pants, because just the fabric touching my knee was unbearable. If I went outside, I often had to hold a blanket in front of me just to keep the air from touching my skin. After years of trial and error, various medications, doctors, invasive and risky procedures and therapies, but still unable to function due to pain, I was blessed to be referred to two chronic pain programs that would eventually help me to turn my life around. With extreme determination, I eventually got off all opioid medication. I learned how to walk again. I learned how to drive again with the use of an adapted car. I live on my own, and most importantly, I found a new purpose in life. I was watching a TV show called Yellowstone starring Kevin Costner, and a few episodes back, his character said something that resonated with me. He said, quote, "You can't fix a broken wagon wheel, but you can use the parts to make a new one." I feel that's what I've done with my life. Complex regional pain syndrome and the half dozen or so other conditions that it led to changed the course of my life and left me feeling broken. Eventually, I combined my personality and physical limitations to build a new life with new hopes and dreams. I still live with pain. In fact, more parts of my body are affected by pain now, and I have more pain conditions and symptoms to deal with than I did 19 years ago, but I've learned how to live a happy life despite the pain. Volunteering and advocating for the pain community is what now fills my heart. September is not only Pain Awareness Month, but it's also the month that we commemorate the anniversary of 9/11. I can't think of a more meaningful time to talk to you regarding the impact that chronic pain has on our country. Many of the survivors of 9/11, including first responders, ended up as part of our pain community just because they went to work that day. The same could be said for our veterans of all ages. Pain awareness is important all year, but particularly during September. Without awareness, there is no motivation for finding new treatments or research for a cure. People often ask what they specifically can do to support and help the pain community. One way, as a city, is to grant this proclamation tonight, recognizing September as Pain Awareness Month, so I thank you for this support. Another way to be supportive is to read and pass along the information I've provided in the U.S. Pain Foundation resource bags. Finally, I leave you with three specific tips to help someone you know that is living with chronic pain. One is offer to run errands for them. Two is to offer to drive them to appointments. Three, and most importantly, is to listen and believe them. As our interim CEO, Nicole Hammondway, stated, "We need to remove the stigma and shame. We need to discuss the challenges. We need to advocate for more research and access to care, and we need to see the warrior within." Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle, and I hope you feel better. That brings us to item 5B. We will receive a presentation from the San Carlos Community Foundation.
Chair, out of an abundance of caution, I'm going to recuse myself.
Thank you, Laura.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Jessica Yang, and as the President of the Board for the San Carlos Community Foundation, I'm honored, it is my honor to be presenting this update to the Board and the community on behalf of the Board of Directors. So, in May of 2019, the Steering Committee for the Community Foundation came and presented sort of our initial recommendations in terms of what we would like to do with the Community Foundation, and what we heard was, and we listened to the community as well as the Council for feedback, and we did a lot more work on our position for how we can serve the community by really listening and learning about our nonprofits and really understanding what they do, how they do it, and how we could potentially help them more. We interviewed community foundations as well, as we aren't the first, so don't want to reinvent the wheel, so we wanted to learn from them best practices on how to establish a community foundation and where they have found to be most effective. And then, we also had some feedback and community concerns expressed by the San Carlos Education Foundation, and we have since reached out to them and met with their leadership on several occasions to share with them, to understand what their concerns were, as well as sort of provide them feedback after we did our nonprofit outreach in terms of what we learned, and we look forward to ongoing collaboration with that organization. One other thing was the budget request. We made a high-level budget request, and we'll go into that a little bit further, but details are in the packet that was submitted along with this presentation. And then, last item on this page is that we will be holding a community event, and I welcome everybody and anybody who's interested in giving us input and sharing with us and building community with us to join us on October 5th over at the Adult Community Center. So, going into our presentation, between the months of April and August of 2019, the Subcommittee on the Steering Committee went out and reached out to, well, there are over 200 nonprofit organizations that serve San Carlos. We reached out to 30 active organizations, including former city grant recipients and the organizations that are most active and serve the largest population of our community. During the outreach, we pretty much reheard overwhelming support for the formation of the Community Foundation. The nonprofit leaders saw that a community foundation was an opportunity for the Community Foundation to amplify their good work and support them in disseminating the message that they needed, they wanted to share, and really disseminate the good work that they're sharing. They also, as San Carlos residents, were really excited about the fact that the returns from the endowment would be inserted back in the community over the next, you know, over generations and ongoing. Some recurring needs we heard from these nonprofits were that there was a lack of affordable office space in San Carlos. Many of the service organizations, as well as some of the nonprofits, indicated that there were aging boards, they had aging boards, so they're really looking forward to having younger and more active members, not only join and volunteer, but also potentially take leadership roles in their organizations. Transportation was identified by many, many, many of the nonprofits, large and small. From the size of the Samaritan House, which delivers over a million meals a year, their challenge is they don't have people who drive and deliver those meals that they actually prepare. From a service organization and a people perspective, there was a lot, there's a lack of transportation in terms of getting elderly, as well as students and young children around across our town. And then, finally, of course, funding is always an issue. They would love to get funding for projects and just sort of operating funds. So, we also talked to community foundations to learn about their best practices, so that we weren't reinventing the wheel. With over 750 community foundations across the country, there's just so many learnings already in place, and three of the ones that we interviewed are right here in our community. What we learned, we actually went into these conversations with a list of questions, so that we could have a very sort of unbiased and clear sort of assessment and gather the data that we needed. We went in to ask about needs assessment in terms of the frequency that they would run the needs assessment, as well as the funding for needs assessments. We asked them about their relationships with the city that they're in, the education foundations, any local businesses, or nonprofits and service organizations. We asked them about some of their successes and how they go about fundraising. We also, as we are forming our organization, asked them about critical skill sets needed for a founding board, and any other recommendations they would like to share with us. So, I'm going to share with you some of those learnings. From a needs assessment perspective, the only one of these three foundations we spoke to that spent money on that was the San Bruno Community Foundation. As you know, they received their endowment also based upon punitive damages from PG&E, and so because of that, they spent $34,000 on a needs assessment exercise with a consulting firm that ultimately provided them with a deck of materials, and they still needed to figure out exactly what to do. They did share that deck with us, so we have a lot of great input and insights that we can extract and learn from. In talking to the Palo Alto Community Fund and the Los Altos Community Foundation, they received their inputs primarily from the grant requests that they receive every single year, and going through those cycles, that's when they assess, you know, where the needs are and determine how to fund those. On the topic of relationship with the city, all three hands down said, you know, be a standalone 501(c)(3), and this actually was very interesting coming from San Bruno, as they were actually established as a supporting organization for the City Council, and what they learned was that by doing that, it actually forced them to be brown acted, so they weren't able to act as quickly and as expediently as a community foundation might need to. So their recommendation was definitely standalone, but definitely work with the city, but, you know, be standalone so you can execute. Los Altos said that the city truly, truly values the partnership with the Community Foundation because the Community Foundation had flexibility and execution. On the topic of education foundations, there is a huge, huge education foundation based in Palo Alto. It was formed very similar to our San Carlos Education Foundation. And so, as we were talking to the executive directors of these community foundations, they pretty much, well, so Palo Alto said, "There was never any conflict. People always donated to the schools, and any additional monies would go to other charitable causes." With regards to the Los Altos Community Foundation, they actually said, "They are very, very different customer segments who you would go after from a donation perspective. The people that the Community Foundation focuses on for the donations and volunteerism actually come from the people after the kids go off to college, but the parents are still young and energetic enough that they want to give back and do something for the community." So, we wanted to better understand that as that that was a concern expressed by the community here. With regards to fundraising, there was definitely a lot of good talk, sharing with us about the opportunity around estate and legacy giving. As San Carlos is an environment with very expensive housing now, the opportunity is to perhaps give some portion of that as part of legacy or estate giving. And then, the last thing from a community foundation perspective that I got a lot out of was, Los Altos Community Foundation actually runs a community-wide volunteer appreciation event. It's not just about, you know, one nonprofit at a time, but really, they invite the entire, their entire community nonprofits to nominate who has been contributing most for one-off organizations or overall, and it's a massive community event that celebrates community So then, moving on to, back to sort of our nonprofits in our area, beyond the 30 nonprofits who we spoke to one-on-one, we recently held an event over at the Sobrato Center on September 4th, where we invited a lot of the other nonprofits that we weren't able to reach out to on a one-on-one basis. We had 45 attendees across 25 different organizations attend to learn about the organization, as well as participate in some really exciting and energetic small group breakouts. So during the small group breakouts, we seeded a couple questions. One was, what would your organization do if you had $10,000 more? Second, what would you do if you had unlimited funds? And then, we opened up discussion in terms of, what do you feel are the benefits of being a San Carlos resident and being part of the San Carlos community? And we also then asked, okay, what do you think is missing? So through this exercise, we got a lot of fascinating discussion. So, benefits of San Carlos, great schools, great place to raise a family, great neighbors. Somebody said, "We actually go on vacations with our neighbors." People love the fact that Hometown Days Parade, as many people were in the parade as people watching on the sidelines, so it's really a great community. But they have identified that what has been missing is the increased traffic, the housing for service workers, as well as the loss of scoot has really caused there to be transportation challenges for youth as well as the elderly. And one thing that was identified, being a mother of a young child, that I wasn't aware of, was that there was really nothing for teenagers or young adults to do in San Carlos, and so there was a lot of discussion around having a community pool, or having a performance arts center, or after-school activities and entertainment for students. Actually, while I'm on this point, I forgot to mention that during my one-on-one outreach, I was personally very, very inspired and deeply touched by a lot of the amazing work that the services of these large and small nonprofits have done. There's a quote that I actually took down when I was meeting that brought me to tears, and it was from Diana Conte, the CEO of Parca. She said, "There's an invisible group of nonprofits that holds it all together for human need, and the foundations and nonprofits come and service those gaps. We are the safety net of the communities." So that was just so powerful to me, and I feel like going through those conversations, I just wanted to volunteer for every single organization, but I knew that I don't have the capacity, but I know San Carlos does. Another quote I wanted to share was from One Life Counseling, Suzy Hughes. So, One Life Counseling is only a four-year-old nonprofit, very small, but growing rapidly because they service mental health in the community. They have gotten more referrals in a month than any psychiatric, you know, psychiatric office would receive in, you know, a month or a year, or, I'm sorry, in a year's time. And her challenge with the small nonprofit is, it's very hard for the little guy to keep up the office space grant writing support. She actually made a comment, "The city should have nonprofit rates." I think she was trying to apply for use of a space on industrial road after spending large amounts of money. She was actually denied and rejected for zoning reasons. So, the challenge of a nonprofit just to grow in our community has been a challenge, and so I wanted to bring that forth. So, income disparity affects everyone, and it's something that a lot of the other service organizations that I've spoken to have mentioned, and that we, while we are fortunate to live here, there's still a lot of need, and these service organizations are really what boosts everything up. So in terms of what our focus for the Community Foundation is at founding, after doing all these interviews, is we want to focus on amplifying and supporting local nonprofits. In our initial years, our purpose is to be a connector. We want to support participation and foster volunteerism in our community. We want to amplify and disseminate the nonprofit's message so that it can reach beyond just their constituents and their current donors. We want to award grants and funding while they're asking for a lot of operational budget and multi-year fund grants. I think that as we start to establish ourselves and start to build the relationships with the nonprofit organizations, we can determine where that makes sense. And lastly, here on this page is, provide services to support nonprofits. Grant writing is a challenge. There are large organizations that actually have paid grant writers, or they would contract grant writers to secure the monies, but for small organizations like One Life Counseling or other sort of small startups, the one or two people that work there are the only people that can actually spend the time on writing these, and then if they do get the grant, then they have to report back. And so the opportunity here is, how can we, as a community foundation, start to think about how to simplify grant writing and grant, you know, support for these nonprofits? So this is where we want to focus our initial years, to really establish ourselves. We wanted to address the community concerns that came up during the last presentation here, and a lot of it came from about how fast we were trying to roll as it relates to marketing, as well as the naming confusion that can come up. And so, we met immediately after this meeting with the members of SCFEF leadership to better understand what their concerns were, and we learned so much just hearing from them in terms of with their experience, paired with some of the experience that we have on our team, to really understand that we really should take a slower role to fundraising, and so our intent is to focus on amplifying and supporting nonprofits. So, as we start to invest the endowment, our intent isn't to immediately start to collect funds. We want to establish ourselves, prove ourselves as adding value to the community before then we open our doors to say, hey, give us money. But our actual approach is, we want to establish the website, and the website is up already, so you can take a look. Our intent is to help connect donors and philanthropists with the causes that move them most, so have them donate directly to those causes before giving funds elsewhere, and also aligning them with, you know, the volunteer opportunities of the existing nonprofit organizations before anything else. And we would really help and use our capabilities to guide them to find their passions and their causes. So, yeah. And one of the things we learned was estate giving is an opportunity, so that was the other thing. So we really wanted to be passive upfront. Naming confusion with SCFEF was definitely called out on by a couple, not only the San Carlos Education Foundation, but other members of the community, so we wanted to be upfront with that. So, our intent is to never use the acronym for the San Carlos Community Foundation. Our naming convention will be San Carlos CF. That's the name for our website, as well as our handles on social media, and we intend to, as we go forth with more marketing and branding establishment in the community, to partner with the SCFEF leadership, to make sure that we are, you know, designing our logo, or writing our slogans, or whatever piece we're putting out, to make sure there is no confusion about the naming convention. There is a reason why we stayed with Community Foundation, because that actually has legal, there's legal associations to a community foundation, so we wanted to be able to stay with that consistent naming, so there's no confusion. So, with all the great feedback and the momentum that we've heard in talking to our community, we've moved forward with an incorporation. We are now officially 501(c)(3) in the state of California. We have filed our federal 501(c)(3) application, and we just received a letter today indicating that we, at some point, will hear back from the IRS. We've secured our EIN, and we've, Greg Rubin, thank you, have helped us draft our bylaws, and they have been approved and submitted as part of our application. We have elected our officers as of August 21st. Myself, President Cameron Johnson here is our Vice President, our Secretary Michael Campbell, and Treasurer Brian Best. We are very fortunate that of the 15 members of the Steering Committee, 11 members have decided to stay on and be part of our Board of Directors. These are the rest of our members, Board of Directors. I think many of us are here in the audience with us today. As of our first board meeting earlier last week, we have established our committees. We have an executive committee, a board development committee, finance investment, marketing fundraising, grants, and nonprofit support. Just wanted to provide a little bit more clarification around the operating budget. So, for those of you who have seen the packet, there's actually a detailed breakout, line by line of the operating budget, but during the May meeting, we had made a sort of a bulk request of $200,000. How that breaks down is $40,000 would go to funding operating expenses for the next two years, and these operating expenses are intended to cover any sort of legal, accounting, investment, management fees, et cetera. We are going to be an all-volunteer organization with no paid staff, and so this is really just to get us off the ground, exercising and actually working on doing the work. The grant giving, so the remainder of the $200,000 is actually a $180,000 ask, which really was intended to help us sort of accelerate the grant giving. So it's going to be $80,000 for the first year and $80,000 for the second year, in terms of two years' worth of grant monies. So, but in terms of whether or not the Council approves that budget, we want to just back up and say, okay, there's actually three possible options for us for grant giving. One is, in the first couple of years, just no grants made, because it'll take a while probably for our, well, it will take a while for our endowment to start to raise funds that we can then spin out in grants. Our intent is to not ever dip into the endowment, because that should just be maintained, and it's only the stuff that, the investment income that would then be given out as grants. So, the low is no grants made in the first couple of years. Moderate would be, we would make grants from any sort of donations we might receive. Moderate would be, we would make grants from any sort of donations we might receive. The high would be grants from donations, as well as any city funds that the city might want to contribute to the grant making. In terms of getting ourselves ready to be giving grants, we've been invited by the San Bruno Community Foundation to be part of their community grants fund review panel. And so, a member of our grants committee will be participating in that process to learn about how they do it with a panel of volunteer grant readers. And we also, on our grants committee, have people actually with quite substantial grant giving experiences, so we'll be able to pair those experiences together. Up next, October 5th, we have the community forum over at the Adult Community Center from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. We will be back on October 28th to be, to answer any questions, if there is any, at the City Council Budget Meeting. And on November 6th is our next community foundation board meeting. As we are a community foundation, our intent is to have open board meetings. So anybody who's interested in being part of or coming to listen, just send us a note, and we'll send you guys the agenda and an invitation. These are our social media, as well as email information, if anybody wants to contact us. Let's see. So, thank you again, the event on October 5th. I hope to see y'all there. It is an all-ages event. We will have children's activities, so families can come and participate without worrying about the kiddos.
Thank you, Jessica. This is a presentation, but Greg, I think it'd be, or it'd be appropriate for us to ask what, if any, kind of feedback they're looking for. Is that correct, or reasonable?
That's the intent of tonight, to see if there's any feedback.
And Jessica, we'll, we'll probably have some questions from the DIAS, I know I have a few. But before we get to that, unless my colleagues object, I'd like to follow a pattern we've been using, I think with some success, which is to, I have some speaker cards, is to allow audience members to address the council before we ask our questions, because that may spark questions from us. So, I would ask the speakers to respect our two-minute time limit, and we'll start with Elena Corso.
Good evening, I'm Elena Corso, and I'm, thank you for letting me speak this evening. I'm the President of the Board for the San Carlos Education Foundation. I wanted to come here tonight to let council know about the communication efforts between SCEFF and the community foundation. The San Carlos Community Foundation heard the feedback last spring from our organization and others in the community, and my, and in my opinion, has been working very hard on community outreach with local nonprofits and community stakeholders. Representatives from the education foundation met with the members of the community foundation in spring, over summer, and just last week, the President Jessica and Secretary Michael came to present to our executive committee. I wanted to take this opportunity to publicly thank the representatives from the community foundation for listening to our concerns, reaching out to have meetings, and researching to formulate best practices, comprehend the complex nonprofit community we have in San Carlos, and try to determine their fit into the community and the value they can provide to San Carlos with these public funds. We want to again state that the Board of SCEFF has never approached this issue as a "not-in-my-backyard" concern. We strongly believed that more explanation and outreach was needed to clarify the reasons and methods by which the community foundation was being created. We value any citizens that want to make our city better. Our SCEFF board gave me feedback that there is still concern over the name of the San Carlos Community Foundation, and we have expressed this to the community foundation team. We would have preferred they had called themselves the Community Foundation of San Carlos, to avoid any confusion with SCEFF. While we have been promised that SCCF will not be used, it has already been used as shorthand in your packet tonight, and at recent meetings with nonprofit organizations, so this causes us continued concern when, as a society, we tend to abbreviate and shorten. We are encouraged the community foundation team listen to SCEFF and community found, feedback. We look forward to what we hope will be many more conversations regarding how the community foundation can collaborate with SCEFF and other nonprofits to help amplify and expand our distinct missions. Thank you.
Pat May, by the way, thank you. Next up is Jennifer Rudy.
I'm Jennifer Rudy, Vice President of the SCEFF Board of Directors, and I'm here to echo everything that Elena just said, so take that into my comments. On behalf of the Board, we would like to thank our dedicated community foundation volunteers for listening, really, and incorporating much of the community's feedback into their planning process via interviews with nonprofits and meetings with our own board and leadership. We believe SCEFF and the community foundation are on a good path for developing a working relationship. We do look forward to continued conversations between SCEFF and the community foundation, and perhaps even a more formalized meeting schedule between, between our two organizations, or even an MOU in the future, so we can continue to learn from one another and leverage our collective work in our small city. As Elena mentioned, our board does continue to be concerned about the overlap in our names. I like seeing San Carlos CF up there. It, we would have, we believe the name of the Community Foundation of San Carlos reduces confusion between our two organizations, yet adheres to the legal standards of naming such a foundation. In a small city like ours, avoiding brand confusion is really important for organizations and their potential donors. That aside, we are very encouraged by the steps taken to gather SCEFF and the broader community's input. As a citizen and nonprofit professional myself, who has been a grant maker, I would like the council to encourage the foundation to continually assess the needs of its constituents in our nonprofit and resident communities. What's been presented to you is a really great start, where they've backed up and slowed down, and we're very appreciative, but a community foundation's work in this area is never really done, so I would just like to state that they should continually assess the most pressing needs of their nonprofit community and their residents, and perhaps there are ways the city can support the foundation in this manner by helping them with ongoing data collection and community input to help inform the practices of the foundation as it hones its vision and mission. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. I think the two of you must have timed your speeches. That was almost perfect, two minutes. Karen Molinari, you've got a tough act to follow, Karen.
Great people in our community. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Karen Molinari with Healthy Cities Tutoring. Tonight, I also want to acknowledge and thank the community foundation for reaching out to Healthy Cities Tutoring over the summer, and for hosting their first gathering of local nonprofits on September 4th. I commend the leadership of this foundation for listening to the concerns that were raised. I know tonight is just an update presentation, and that there will be an opportunity in October for council to vote on further details and funding of the foundation. I would appreciate the opportunity to, oh, and I also appreciate the opportunity to review the bylaws and incorporation materials that were in tonight's packet. A few of our board members ask that prior to next month's meeting, we were able to review documents three through eight listed on page 44 of your packet. These documents are critical to our board's ability to understand and assess the many benefits and potential impacts of the foundation on Healthy Cities Tutoring, and I will list them. Document three, Statement of SCCF Purpose and Future Activities as an Exempt Organization. Document four, Statement on Planned Funds for San Carlos Serving Nonprofits. Document five, the SCCF Marketing and Fundraising Plan. Document six, Statement on Extent of Fundraising. Document seven, SCCF Grants Policy. And document eight, Initial Grant Application. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Karen. Is there anybody else who wishes to adjust the council on this particular item? All right, as I mentioned earlier, I have some questions that I wanted to ask the folks from the, the foundation, but I presume there are probably others as well up here who do, so who would like to start? Ron.
Thank you, Mark. I don't know who this is directed, but, yeah, Jessica, come on up. We did get a number of emails and comments and questions and things like that. It does seem, though, that you've answered a lot of questions, and I, I want to commend you for listening to the community. This is a little bit different tone than we saw last spring, so I, I encourage you to just keep the process going. I'm also very happy to see that you have another engagement coming up in October, so that's, I'm also very gratified to see that. I, I'm just, the only thing I'm really kind of curious about is the, the not having a full-time paid staff. I mean, it seems to me that nonprofits need to have somebody to do a lot of the mundane things that, that, that come up. Is that really a short-term goal? I mean, is there a long-term plan to have some sort of personnel? I don't know what happened there, but, that's what happened, you just pushed the wrong button.
May I, may I ask what game we're listening to?
That was the Mets game.
Oh, okay, then turn it off.
You can take the, the New Yorker out of New York, but, but, you know, the Mets fan out of New York, but, anyway.
So, staff.
So maybe you could briefly respond to that for me.
Yeah, for sure. So, as we are a community foundation, and we are going to be working with donations, and, and we have an amazing team here, we pretty much, as a steering committee, decided that we will probably not require any paid staff until we are more established, we have a lot more activity going on, because right now, we are very, very fortunate to have several members of our steering committee, in fact, in our officer group, that are in that sort of target group of, kids are just off to college, they are still young, energetic, want to do stuff. I am a, I guess, a stay-at-home mom, but, and I am formerly of the tech world, so I have a lot of energy and excitement and actually wanting to do stuff. So, I think for the next year, two, three, I think we will actually have quite a lot of energy of team members to actually take a lot of the stuff forward. Now, come sometime down the road, as we start to get larger and more established, and more people sort of rotate in and onto the board, we may need paid staff, but we haven't quite gotten to seeing that far into the future yet, because there's quite a lot to do with just this team that we have, that we've identified with the community.
Well, I see you're very far along in the, in the, the naming issue, but I, I was thinking on my own, before I heard anybody comment, that community foundation of San Carlos was a pretty good idea. So it's nice to see that there, you know, there's some common thinking along those lines, but I realize that, you know, you've, you've sort of advanced in your branding process, so be that as it may, you know, it may be something to think about in the future.
Yeah, we honestly haven't gone forth when any, with any sort of formal branding, or logo creation, or any sort of marketing, and so our intent was, as we filed our paperwork, we needed to put in a name. So that is our legal name. Now, in terms of how we want to go to market, is still something that we are very open to in collaborating with the, the members of SCEFF and the leadership of SCEFF, because we, we do understand and we do not want to make, have any sort of confusion in market. So there's still opportunities of what we do business as.
Well, it seems that since this foundation is all about the community, it's only natural to lead with the word "community," so, anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Jessica, I want to start by saying thank you for your very thoughtful and organized presentation. I can tell that your team has done a really great job listening and reaching out to the community, and doing that engagement that we discussed at the last meeting, so I want to commend you for your efforts. That was really good, and I'm so glad to hear so many positive comments from the community, and I think that speaks volumes to the outreach that you have done and the work that you've put in, so thank you. My questions for you, I went, I read through the bylaws and the forms that were included in the packet, and I noticed that the address of the foundation is at the Chamber of Commerce, and I'm wondering if you can give us a little background on why that was chosen.
Yeah, so we needed to identify a physical address, and Tom Davids are one of our steering committee members, and also now board member, is currently present at the, at the Chamber of Commerce. And so, because of sort of the, the need to get the paperwork out and put an address there, that's what we decided to start with. As we move forward, it was by understanding that we are able to modify those, that address, but until we sort of actually formed and established and determined whether or not to give a personal address, or whatnot, we started with something that was more neutral and, but still had a community presence.
Okay, great, thank you. And I had one other kind of specific question, and if you want to get back to me, that's fine. I was looking in the bylaws again at the term limits for the Board of Directors, and it says the maximum number of consecutive terms that a director may hold office as a voting member of the board is two. A director who has held office as a voting member of the board for three consecutive terms shall cease to be a director at the expiration of his third term, so I'm just a little confused if there's a term limit of two or three.
Let me look back to the team. I was, I didn't, let me, do we want to take that back and come back, or?
Let's get back.
Okay. We will be getting back to you.
That's great. And I think your presentation answered several of my questions already, so again, it looks like you've learned a lot from the other foundations, too. I loved hearing more about what San Bruno is offering, so I feel like there's no reason to reinvent the wheel here in San Carlos, so I appreciate all of that outreach that you've done.
And we have a lot more notes on every single one of those community foundation meetings, if you are so interested in hearing about it, so happy to share.
Adam.
Thank you, Jessica. That was a good presentation. Thanks for all the outreach and stuff. I guess I had a couple of questions, and thanks to everyone who's signed up to be on the board and stick with it. I know you talked to some of the nonprofits, I guess partly, I mean, I guess, the last meeting we had about this, I think one of the things that I wanted to get some more feedback from you guys on, and I may have missed it in the report and everything, but I was looking sort of at bigger projects, not just giving to the nonprofits, but sort of what, what can, what can be a game changer for the community that this foundation can do? And I didn't touch on that in, in here, and I just wanted to get your thoughts on what kind of feedback you got about that, and, because if you're talking to the nonprofits, you're going to get one view of things versus talking to the wider community about what, what they'd love to see, what the wider community would like to see, and how, what kind, what kind of impact the foundation could give.
Yeah, so we do have the community forum, where we're supposed to reach, we are planning to reach out to actual community members to give their feedback, but during our session over at Sobrato Center, there are, I mean, these nonprofit leaders are also community members, and they did share things in terms of some big projects they wanted to see, and I think shared that during the presentation in terms of the pool, the aquatic, the, the performance arts center, as well as activities that families can do together, or be able to entertain our teenagers and young adults. In terms of what the community foundation can do for not only nonprofits, but also the community, is to actually pull together a community calendar. That was something I know the Chamber of Commerce was very interested in as well, is to ultimately pull one calendar together where it lists, for, organizations can post all of their potential donor events, activities, and have it in a place where other nonprofits in the community can look at, so they don't end up, you know, scheduling over one another. So that's one project that is well underway right now by one of our members, one of our board members, Yael Goshen. She's been working with Susan Day at the Arbor Bay School on pulling a lot of that together already. Other thing we were doing is pulling together a nonprofit directory of services and capabilities, and so that would help philanthropists and donors in our community look for the things that matter to them, so that they can know where to volunteer their times and energies. Another thing that we've talked about as some of the board members is, not necessarily a clearinghouse, but a place, a marketplace where people can actually share some of their superpower skills in terms of things that they would like to donate in kind, their capabilities, and we could help identify the nonprofits that might need those skills. So during one of my meetings with a nonprofit, they said, "Oh, you know, we just had this whole bunch of furniture that's been delivered by IKEA, I just need somebody to help me put the stuff together." Now, if we have like handy men, handy women, who, or who, people who love to put IKEA projects together, we could sort of sync that together. It's just so fulfilling when you get, get that shelf up. But there are members of the community that have the time, energy, or excitement around those things, and so one of the things was the possibility of trying to bring those two sides of the equation together.
Thank you, and I appreciate the idea of looking at some of the bigger issues and things, and being, sort of thinking out of the box in terms of your IKEA example, or other things, to harness some of the volunteers as well. And just so, just so, and I think I understood how you phrase this in terms of the grant, so the thought is, sorry, kind of slow down right now, let things, kind of figure some things out, try to raise some money passively, look at some estate giving, and then kind of hold off on sort of any direct solicitation at this point, in terms of, so where do you see a ramp of when you start sort of being more aggressive around getting more funding in?
I think it, we want to focus our first two years on really establishing ourselves and showing the value that we are providing to the community, so that through that sort of good work, we're getting our names known and as a trusted group. I think once we establish that trust and credibility in the community is when we can then go out and actually then go out and actually solicit funds. But we will likely be very, very targeted in our solicitations as well, because we don't want to step on the toes of, and, you know, take monies that would also already be going into our local community. We want to be targeting folks who donate abroad, national, international programs that may have a little bit more, that they want to contribute to their community that don't know where to contribute to. So we would be sort of thoughtful in that process.
Great. Thank you.
Great presentation, Jessica. I have a series of questions, but the most important one I want to start with is, I understand that Netflix has optioned the story of how you're forming yourselves.
I have to defer that question to a fellow board member.
I just hope that might be another source of funding. No, seriously. The, I do, as my colleagues have said already, I want to compliment everybody involved, both on the NACON Foundation and our existing foundations, for how you've worked well together in the last few months to kind of, not so much shift gears, but hone the vision for what you want to do. I have to admit, I didn't predict, you know, what you'd come back with, but I was confident that we had nothing but people of goodwill involved on all sides of this, and so something good was going to come out of it, and it sure seems like that's what's happening. The, for me, as I said, I have some questions. The only real, I hesitate to call it a fly in the ointment, I'm still a little bit concerned about the name San Carlos in the Community Foundation, because however you juggle it, it ends up running into, you know, sort of a long-established brand, if you will. So to the extent it's possible, I would certainly encourage you guys to think about whether there's some way to distance it further. Not to, not to push a particular thing, but as you were talking, one of the notes I made to myself is, we all up here routinely get emails that say, "I can't believe in the city of good living." Everybody in San Carlos knows the motto of the city, okay? I think they, I think the realtors give it to them when they, when they show up. Maybe there's a way to use that in the name, because that, at least in terms of giving locally, that is a strong identifier, I think. Of course, it's a little bit clumsier because it's longer, but I'd ask you to, you guys to continue working on the name, not to accept that proposal, but just if you can find something else that distances it further from the Ed Foundation, I would be happier. One other comment that I'd make is, I thought it was interesting and important that you got feedback from a number of people about how teenagers, pre-teens, and whatnot, there's sort of a gap in terms of what's available in San Carlos. If you have not already, I would, I would encourage your group, when time permits, to interact with the Youth Center and the Youth Center Foundation, because that's sort of partially their bailiwick as well, and I have a funny feeling they would not turn down help as well. And then there might be some nice synergy there. The, I had a question on your chart about grant giving options the first couple of years. What I was unclear about is where the earnings from the endowment would fit in. Now, obviously, those will, they start at zero and grow over time, but is there a plan for them as well, or is it just the first two years, whatever that is, it gets plowed back into the endowment, and then we worry about it down the road? The finance guy?
Yes. Brian, best or treasure?
Yes. Hi, Brian.
Our plan in general, at a high level, would be to allocate about 4% a year, depending on market performance, out of the endowment as what would be put into that then-current year grants.
Oh, I see. So even startup year may be different because of who knows when the money comes in and gets invested and whatnot, but conceptually, the earnings that come out of that, you would begin looking to donate that.
Right. And so that will be the core of our basis. And so the idea of having the first couple of years as the city helped, that startup budget that we asked, was really, we know we're not going to have earnings at least for one year out.
Right.
And for us to start that whole cycle of doing, you know, proving ourselves, we need to give out money. And so the longer that gets pushed off till we have earnings, the longer is that we can prove ourselves, and we're just trying to prove ourselves to the best we can.
Fair enough. Thank you for clarifying that. I appreciate it. That's all the questions I had. Again, great job, everybody. I look forward to pushing this thing through to completion. And anybody else have any other questions or comments?
I just wonder why everybody looked at me when the pool was mentioned, so.
Because it's going to be known as the Ron Collins Memorial Pool, except that you have to buy first.
Thank you all.
Thank you. All right. Who can, Jeff, can we send somebody out to call Laura back, please?
Already did.
Already did. Thank you. It's always good when the city manager anticipates things. Do you know what the rest of the votes are going to be like tonight? Okay. (laughing). Thank you, Tara. That brings, this brings us to our next item, item fight at 5C, where we will be hearing a presentation on the Caltrain Business Plan from Sebastian Petty. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor. City Council members, thank you for having me here. My name is Sebastian Petty. I'm a Director of Policy Development in Caltrain, and I've been leading our business plan effort. So tonight, I want to give you a brief update on what is a pretty significant long-range planning effort for us. Although it's called a business plan, it is really a long-range, comprehensive plan for the future of the Caltrain service and the corridor that we operate on. So it's a, it's a big effort that we've been working very hard on, and we're approaching a fairly pivotal point in the plan. We've been doing a lot of technical work over the last year, really, and started the scoping before that. And where we're coming up to in the plan is, is potential board adoption of a long-range service vision for Caltrain. And so it's really setting our sights on kind of what is, what is the goal we're aiming for? How much should the railroad grow? What is our long-range plan that we can think about working towards incrementally? And as we're approaching that pivotal point, it's important to kind of just acknowledge, why are we having this conversation at all? The corridor, the rail corridor that Caltrain operates on has been a passenger rail corridor for over 150 years, which is pretty old by California standards. And so what that means is, as the railroad has grown up, really, the communities that we traverse have grown up around us as well. And one of the things we see is that that growth is not stopping. By the time we get to 2040, which is sort of where the long-range regional horizon currently is, there'll be as many as 1.5, or, excuse me, 1.2 million people, new people, living or working within two miles of our stations. That's 40% more folks than are doing that today. And so Caltrain's in a unique position here, because we are in the process of electrifying the railroad now. So we've already sort of committed on a path of long-range transformation. And really, the question is, what will we use that system for? Where will we go next? And how much will we grow? As I mentioned, we're doing this in the context of a lot of long-range growth that's projected. And what you can see on the right there is just the, the number of combined population and jobs around, around our stations today in the lighter blue and what's projected in the regional growth projections by 2040. We're doing it also in the context of a corridor that's changing, where we have a lot of major planned projects up and down the corridor, all the way from San Francisco through San Jose, that will connect into our system, that'll bring riders in and add riders. And so really, we're asking ourselves the question of, how is we, should the railroad plan for that future? Do we want to be on a trajectory where we're sort of staying with the planning horizon that we've, we've had for the last decade or so, which is really to electrify at some point in the future, blend with high-speed rail when their system is ready? And that's really about where we've been. That's sort of the baseline trajectory we've talked about. Or do we want to be in a place where we're maybe providing more train service, the level of service we think that might be needed to meet the sort of long-term demand we see in the corridor? And that's really the work we've been doing over the last year, is developing these illustrative growth scenarios, is what we've been calling them. It's a little bit of a clunky phrase, but looking at basically different detailed options of what would it mean if we wanted to run more trains on the corridor? What kind of infrastructure would it take? What would it cost? What would the service look like? I won't go through these in details, other than I think the key phrase I said is illustrative. We've done this work at a, at a fairly high level of detail to really prove out the concepts of looking at, in some technical detail, how we could actually make different levels of train service work in the corridor, how that would blend with high-speed rail at such time as they ever come on the corridor. And so we've looked, again, at a baseline scenario that looks at us fully electrifying the corridor, going up to as many as six trains per hour, but maybe not growing more than that. And then at some point in the future, high-speed rail comes. We looked at a, what we've been calling a moderate growth scenario, or sort of a middle growth scenario, that looks at, well, what would it look like if Caltrain were running as many as eight trains per hour in each direction in the future? So four express trains, kind of like the baby bullet trains we run today, and then four local trains. Doing that would require us to build some new passing tracks, fairly short passing tracks, none contemplated in this case in San Carlos, but sort of station-based passing tracks in the areas shown in sort of the light blue on the map there. And then finally, we wanted to kind of ask the question, what's really the most train service the corridor could handle? If we really wanted to max out what's possible on the corridor, what would that look like? And so we looked at a very aggressive scenario that looks at building from that moderate growth and adding another four Caltrain trains on top of that. So a total of 12 Caltrain trains in each direction every hour, as well as four high-speed rail trains. Doing that is possible, but it requires some very extensive infrastructure, including passing tracks likely here in San Carlos. And so, again, we're, we're really, the goal in this was to look and say, what is, what's the most, what can it handle, and what would it look like or take to do that? And that's sort of what we found, is if we ever, as a corridor, wanted to grow that much, it would take that type of infrastructure. We've gone through a detailed evaluation of these different scenarios and done things like ridership projections on them, using sort of regional growth forecasts and looking at kind of how passengers in the future might respond to the improvements in service. Today, Caltrain carries around 65,000 riders per weekday. In the future, with land use changes, we think that we're looking at passenger demand anywhere between about 150,000, when we constrain it to capacity, all the way up to over 200,000 riders who might want to use our service. And so that's a result of both improvements to the service, as well as, again, just the sheer level of growth that we see projected in the corridor and that's really manifesting around us today. When we think about that in terms of some regional benefits or things that maybe matter to folks who don't ride the train every day, one of the metrics that we like to use to think about that is the equivalent lanes of freeway traffic on 101 in an hour. So today, if we look at the number of people that Caltrain carries in its peak hour, when we're busiest, we're carrying the equivalent of about four freeway lanes worth of people. When we look at these growth scenarios, we're looking at adding an additional four to up to nearly nine freeway lanes worth of people. So a real increase in a regional capacity benefit. Another element of the plan that's been, that's been a major element, it's fortunately one that San Carlos doesn't have to contend with, has been grade separation. So there are many places along the peninsula where the road and the tracks are together. Fortunately, in San Carlos, the city made the decision to grade separate some years ago, and so the city does not have to look at that issue. But it's been a major issue and a major cost driver, as we think about what might be required to upgrade the corridor in the future to handle more train service. When we look at those cost elements, we've done a lot of detailed financial analysis behind it. This PowerPoint is sort of a very short version of a much larger set of analysis. The costs are quite substantial. So they're, the total cost for upgrading the corridor, all the way from Gilroy to downtown San Francisco. And so this includes not just direct Caltrain projects, but things like grade separation projects on the corridor, high-speed rail investments, regional projects like the extension into downtown San Francisco, or rebuilding of Jurdon Station. The total is anywhere between about $22 billion, all the way up to $30 billion in investment that would be required, not as a single project, but to make that happen over time. We've looked at a range of different user benefits as part of this analysis, and I'll just go through these in summary. We laid all of this out in kind of exhaustive detail for our Board of Directors, but really did a comparison around just how service would be different in these different scenarios for riders, how financial metrics might change or be different. We looked at, again, a whole range of regional benefits of what the impacts, if we, as a region, were to move forward with this kind of investment or these sorts of projects, how those different regional impacts might change. So I highlighted the additional lanes of freeway, but also environmental benefits like greenhouse gas reductions are significant, significant economic impacts and property value increases associated with increased rail service as well. We also looked at sort of this issue of flexibility and uncertainty. You know, I'm talking about projects that are way out in the future, they cost a lot amount, a large amount of money, they're intertwined with big state projects like high-speed rail. And so this is something we looked at, especially when we're talking about some kinds of infrastructure like overtakes that have, or passing tracks that have potential significant community impacts. And so really kind of looked at, thinking about what sort of a vision could we recommend for Caltrain that would be specific enough to help the agency move forward and make decisions, but flexible enough that if some of those other big projects are delayed, that we have a vision that is durable and makes sense without them. We also, as, before I talk about the recommendation we ultimately landed on in terms of making to our board, another big part of this effort was an independent organizational assessment. So looking at the Caltrain organization, how we're governed, how we're, how we do our contracting and deliver services, how we're managed, and thinking about how that may need to grow and evolve over the years as the railroad grows as well. Before I talk about the recommendation, I want to talk, just dive in a little bit to just what some of this could mean in the future for San Carlos in particular. So we, I know the issue of overtake tracks has been one that's been of a lot of concern to this community in the past and very sensitive. So the baseline scenario we looked at, there are no overtakes required. That's consistent with what high-speed rail has recommended as their approved alternative in their environmental process, or their staff-preferred alternative. In the moderate scenario, so that's the one with eight Caltrain trains, there are also no overtakes that would occur in San Carlos. If we were to ever go as a corridor to a higher-growth scenario, where we're really trying to max out service, we might be at a place where at that point in the future, we would need to talk about adding additional tracks if the region in the corridor was wanting to support that greatly increased volume of rail service. We've also looked at sort of the stops per hour, the service level, that, again, on an illustrative basis, San Carlos might be getting in the future at the San Carlos station. So today, there are about 64 weekday train stops at the station. On average, it's about one stop an hour. And that, sorry, those numbers seem a little bit off to me. Well, I apologize. There's an error in those numbers. But I'm sorry, we'll get some corrected numbers back to you, because those numbers are not correct. In general, the ridership numbers, I believe they are. And so we're, and the aggregate stops that we're talking about during the day are correct as well. And so, yeah, I'm sorry. I do apologize. We'll get a corrected version back to the council. The, the general timeframe we're on right now, as we've been doing this work for really the last year, we laid out a draft recommendation to our board in August and are moving for a potential adoption in October. And I want to highlight really what that recommendation is. Essentially, what we are recommending to our board is what we have been calling the moderate or middle scenario. We think that that is a, is a recommendation that makes sense for the overall Caltrain market, and is sort of a level of infrastructure that we can sort of safely plan for and move forward with, even as there are larger changes or questions to state projects or other regional projects. So we think it's a vision that makes sense for Caltrain. We do think that Caltrain, as the owner and manager of the corridor, should take certain steps to not preclude at some point in the future going to a high-growth scenario, if there are major state or regional decisions that would compel that. But for us at this time, we generally feel that that's sort of that middle course is the right recommendation for us. And with that, I'll just highlight, we've been conducting a range of outreach activities throughout this process. We've got 21 different local jurisdictions on the Caltrain corridor, regular engagement... We've got 21 different local jurisdictions on the Caltrain corridor, regular engagement with city staff on a monthly basis and with local electives throughout the corridor and individual city booklets. And again, this, I do apologize for the confusion in the slide. These city booklets are on the website and there is a San Carlos one, and that's a great place to get updated or the precise information about what each of these different scenarios and the recommendation would mean for San Carlos and some ways to get involved. Thanks. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Sebastian. I don't have any speaker cards for this item, but if there's anybody who'd like to address the council on it before we go to council questions, please indicate so. All right, seeing none, are there questions from the dais? Sarah?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I have, so the presentation was great. There's some very large numbers needed to finance these improvements. Where do you foresee that funding coming from?
Sure. No, I think that's a, it's a great question, and I think the first answer I'd throw out there is that this is not one project we're talking about. It's really a path of investment and a series of investments that would be made over time in individual projects. The number is still large, and so if we as a corridor or a region want to achieve this level of growth, there will be new sources of funding required. It will be multiple sources of funding required. It'll require new federal investment, state investment, and probably some level of new local investment as well. And so that includes both the ongoing capital costs or investment costs, as well as the cost to sustain and grow Caltrain service over time. Caltrain currently does not have a dedicated source of funding or the portion of our operating costs that are not covered by our fares is made up by the three counties through which we operate on an annual basis. And so that is and will continue to be a challenge as we grow the system growing forward.
Great, thank you.
Laura?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Very interesting. Couple of questions. How, what factors do you take into consideration to determine service levels for the various train stations?
Sure. So it's, in looking forward, in this kind of an exercise, we're looking at really the combination of two different factors. One is the potential demand that we see. So the level of sort of land use intensity around the station and the potential market as well as what's planned or forecasted in the future. So that's really the demand side. The supply side is looking at what's physically possible on the corridor. So we're, Caltrain is not BART, where all the trains sort of follow the same stopping pattern one after another. We run what would be called a differentiated service today, where some trains are slow, some trains are fast. In the future, we'll continue to do that. And so we have a physical signal system that has limitations, trains have to pass each other somewhere. And so there's, there's a, an element of what's just physically possible on the corridor. And some of that is also, as I mentioned, the corridor is quite old, and so the exact location of some of the stations has also just sort of been fixed in history. So it's really the combination of those two factors we look at. In general, we would ideally try to match the level of service at a station to demand. But again, sometimes that's not entirely possible just because of the physical geography of the corridor.
And then the follow-up question is somewhat related to that. When you touched on it, with the increased ridership that you're anticipating, does, do these plans take into consideration any reconfiguration of any of the train stations or is that a separate and apart?
It does at two different levels. So some of the, a few of the stations I called out where there would be overtak, excuse me, overtakes needed would be a larger scale configuration, where really that, that station as a whole might need to be reconstructed. And again, in the middle scenario, we're recommending San Carlos is not one of those. The other sort of reconfiguration we do think about is, you know, we would like to be in a future where we have level boarding, so where the platform and the entry to the cars are at the same level, so someone doesn't have to go upstairs. And so that would require raising the platforms at some point. We might also look at lengthening the platforms at some point so that we could run longer trains. In general, in those giant investment totals we've shown, we've also assumed a number of sort of placeholder costs for sort of general improvements and upgrades to stations, things to modernize them, provide additional customer amenities and those kinds of elements.
Ron?
Thank you, Chair Olbert. I have had the great good fortune to be appointed to the Caltrain Board just about eight months ago, and I can tell you my appreciation for what the JPB is doing. And the complexity of this entire process has just been enormous, and my appreciation has just grown over the months. I don't really have any questions for Sebastian because I've probably seen this presentation at least four or five times, and it's a tribute to the fact that, you know, he has done it so many times, he's still paying attention, so he notices the smallest little errors. But I just, I think you're probably getting tired of hearing it. We really appreciate the hard work you've done. You've got a great staff. This is a really long-range view of the corridor and transportation needs, public transportation needs over the next 20 years and beyond. And at some point, the Caltrain is going to need dedicated funding stores. We really don't know where, how that's going to happen. It could be a tax, it could be some, some federal or state funds that come that way. But it is important, I think, for everybody to realize that even if you never take Caltrain or a bus, you are impacted by what happens in this, on this corridor over the next 20 years or so, because the capacity, whatever capacity Caltrain can handle, is going to affect every person who commutes anywhere from point A to point B. So increased Caltrain capacity is going to alleviate our, our, our traffic issues. And that one slide he showed at one presentation, it was called Trains Versus Lanes. Can you imagine trying to find four more lanes on 101 or nine more lanes to accommodate the traffic? So I am just, once again, very appreciative of your coming here tonight, first of all, making this presentation, and it's so important that everyone understand what, what the vision is and that Caltrain's on a good path. So thanks again.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation, Sebastian. It was very, very interesting. Couple of questions, mostly, I think, focused on passing track issues. To start with, do you have a sense of to what extent in the numbers that drive the presence of passing tracks and where they'd be located? How much of that is a function of the high-speed rail component? Because I noticed in your three different scenarios, basically, Caltrain service was increasing, the high-speed rail service was increasing a little bit as well. But for example, in the, in the high-growth scenario, if there was no high-speed rail, would you still have the same need for similar kinds of passing tracks?
So that's a very good question. The, I'm trying to think about how to answer it in a way that doesn't get super technical too quickly. In general, if we were to increase Caltrain service to a level where we were running eight trains per hour per direction, or even 12 in the high-growth scenario, in addition to high-speed rail, we would need pass, some passing tracks just for Caltrain. In what, in the vision we have recommended, which is consistent with the middle scenario, we've shown essentially a four-track station at Redwood City or in the vicinity of Redwood City. And that is a sort of a passing track, if you will, or a four-track station that is needed for Caltrain specifically. The other ones we've shown and shown there, there's one in San Mateo, there's one somewhere in northern Santa Clara County, really enable the movement of high-speed rail. So the passing of high-speed rail. So the answer is it varies based on the track. In the high-growth scenario where we are showing this sort of longer overtake through the middle of the corridor, it's a little tricky because that one is needed for both at different points. And so that's one of the reasons we were not willing as staff to recommend that scenario, because we feel that there's still, we're looking way out in the future, there's still a lot of uncertainty around some of these projects and their exact timing and the schedules, and we didn't think that it was appropriate or responsible to move forward at this point and recommend some infrastructure that's extremely impactful to communities while there's still clearly more, more planning to do and really more funding commitments to be made. So that's why we picked this kind of middle ground of saying, we think there's a vision where we can kind of discreetly see the infrastructure that's needed, it makes sense for Caltrain, and that's a good path to move forward. At the same time, we'll make sure that we don't do something that makes this impossible forever, but we really do need to wait and let more planning occur and really see if the region and the state are going to commit to that level of change in the rail system.
The, on occasion, what's that group that I substitute for you on, you on Ron occasionally? The local policymakers group. So occasionally, I stumble into learning some things about rail service and whatnot. One of the things that I've always been a little bit confused about is my sense is that part of the mathematics, if you will, that drives the passing tracks and the location and size, actually is a function of federal rules regarding how trains are allowed to operate on, my simplified sense, on the same track. Okay? And if that's enough of a clue for you to get a sense of that area, whether that area actually exists or not, I'm kind of curious, you as an expert, are there federal rules that actually tend to drive the passing track analysis in a particular direction? My sense is they struck me as being very conservative, given 21st century technology.
I would say I don't know that it is a particular federal rule. You know, rail is a heavily regulated environment in the U.S., and so there's generally a whole collection of regulations that sort of collectively inform what's possible on the railroad. But I don't know that there's a specific regulation, a federal one that's specifically driving the passing tracks. What I can say is, in general, you know, I think one reason we've worked very hard on this project, and we've worked with the High-Speed Rail Authority as a partner on it, is that the best outcomes, both for the, for our riders and for the communities we go through, are going to be when we can work together and really plan for an integrated schedule. So if we as Caltrain were to say, this is what we want to do, and we're never going to change our minds about it, and High-Speed Rail were to say, this is what we want to do, you're, put those two things together and you end up with a situation where you potentially have to build a lot of infrastructure. When we're able to work together and sort of assess the, you know, our ability to be flexible with each other, I think you're able to get an outcome where we're able to maybe minimize the passing tracks and think about an operation that can work with less total infrastructure but still provide the service. So it really requires, I think, planning for an integrated corridor. And I think with Caltrain as the owner of this corridor, it's really our job, not just as an operator, but as the manager of the corridor, to step up and do this kind of work.
Well, I appreciate you sharing that, and I'm glad that my perhaps recollection was wrong or may have been wrong. I may follow up with you separately, just to dig into a little bit more. I also appreciate the, what I think I'm hearing you say on behalf of the Joint Powers Board, because personally, I've seen, you know, they admittedly were early-stage conceptual things. I've seen proposals, if high-speed rail-related passing tracks were going to go through San Carlos, that were going to be like 60 feet up in the air. And they would dramatically change the way the city looked, and as you might imagine, there would probably be dramatic opposition to it. Which plays into the, the other comment I'll make is that there's, as your map of where you're putting in those kind of passing tracks, to the extent they end up being significant, you're creating a really big political challenge for yourself if at the same time you need to get communities to support Caltrain, because it's difficult, as you might imagine, to get voters to say, yeah, I'm happy to dig into my pocket, pay for taxes, so you can wreck my community. The, even though you're providing a service that people want. So I'm glad to hear that there's an awareness of, we don't want to rule things out, but we want to be careful about how we work with communities.
That's right.
Any other questions or comments? All right, well, thank you, Sebastian. I really appreciate it.
Very much.
That brings us to item six, public comment. This is a time set aside for members of the public to address the council on items that are not on the agenda. I have several speaker cards. Three of them actually are merged together. I believe we're going to be shown a video, and so multiple speakers have asked if they could consolidate their time, which we were willing to do in this particular instance. So I will let you introduce and start the video.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and all the council members. And also want to introduce myself. My name is Catherine Nguyen. I'm representing Peninsula Art Academy. Thank you for taking your time and giving me the opportunity to speak and address our request about exceptional use of 151 Old Counting Road in our instructional business. Okay. It's a, yeah, please. Thank you. So our, and also I want to take the opportunity to appreciate all the, my team and also friends over here to give us a lot of support. And our, our company name is Peninsula Art Academy. Our mission is to provide a safe environment where the children of San Carlos and the neighboring cities can learn traditional and multicultural activities related to arts, dance, music, and the languages to enhance and educate their lives. This creates a stronger self-confidence and a brass out, brings out hidden potential that everyone has within. Our community, community is facing a shortage of options. The frustrated and anxious parents are lacking times and solutions for how they can help their children after school. Many kids have resorted to online social sites and playing games on their phones or tablets. This is dangerous and creates an apathetical environment. Children needs, children, children need richer options such as add language besides just academic learning in the regular school. Also, over the last two weekends, we went to various places in San Carlos to test out what are the community options about having the art after-school program. We got about 700 signatures supporting our program. We have some evidence right here. Our program includes multicultural traditional arts, classical dance, ballet, Chinese classical dance, stage and music, languages of Mandarin and English, Singapore math, poetry, calligraphy, drawing, piano, drum, summer camp, yearly foreign study and program exchange with the China Dance Academy, Chinese and English Language School. San Carlos students will have the ability to travel abroad to experience different art and language program in different countries. Participations in local and national dance competitions, volunteer performing art shows in local communities such as senior center, special needs school, recreation centers, and San Carlos city events. While we chose 151 Old Counting Road in San Carlos, after many years of searching for a location for the school program, March 2019, we found 151 Old Counting Road in San Carlos. It was a perfect fit for our mission and requirements. There is 6,000 square feet, 13 classrooms, two dance studios, inside the garden for relaxation with natural. Every classroom has enough natural light, secure environment, plenty of parking. By the way, I have those record of places that we have been searching over the last four to five years for our school program. Our commitment, we are committed to build an after-school educational program at 515, 151 Old Counting Road in San Carlos. We committed to help the children in community to grow through our art language school program. Our staff, all of the teachers, coaches, our professionals experienced in teaching and have a passion in their field. We have a professional management team, school director, school manager, art director, and the board of a school. What we seek from our councils and the mayor, since the building parcel was rezoned to light industrial, instructional services such as ours are now no longer permitted based on the city's definition. We kindly request the city of San Carlos council members and the mayor to consider exceptional use of our instructional business as so allow again teaching in this area. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you, Catherine. Thank you, Catherine.
Certainly.
Why don't you come up and?
Sorry, I actually represent the property owner. My name is Mark Lemond. The one thing about that parcel was originally there was a large business there, and it is the operations center for what was many warehouses of servers and other things. So this one building is actually set up for offices, and basically, there's, I think, 13, 14 offices, and a big open room, which was their break room originally. So according to the new zoning text, as we see it, it calls for warehouse and warehouse and warehouse. And we didn't see anything that would apply under the current definition since 2006, because we had a tenant in there for maybe 10 years, and it changed during that period of time. So.
Thank you. All right. Greg, I had a couple of questions I wanted to ask staff, even though this is a public comment item. So if I ask something that I shouldn't be asking, I'm hoping you will jump in and say, sorry, you can't do that. Jeff, the change in zoning land use that's being referred to by the petitioners, when did that happen? Roughly speaking, I mean, was it in the 2010 round, or is it?
I would have thought it would have been around 2008, Al. Is that?
2011.
2011, okay. 2011, as part of the last general plan and zone, the major general plan and zoning update that the city went through.
And do we know what it changed from to? I mean, to its light industrial.
I'd have to go take a look at what it had been previously.
And I presume in terms of if the city were to, the request to change is something that if the council was interested in pursuing it, it would be something that we would want assigned to the planning commission?
Well, Greg can speak to this maybe a little more, Al, than I can, but I believe there's actually a process by which these folks can apply to have a review done of the zoning. It doesn't come with guarantees that that outcome will take place, but there is a due process mechanism already in place.
Greg, can you comment on that, or is it, are we outside the bounds? Are we actually starting to discuss the item?
Well, I think I'll just answer your basic question about the procedure for a zoning It would definitely need to go to the planning commission by state law, because it's a zoning change. Whether or not a general plan change is part of that application, that might be something that needs to be done, and then there could be some CEQA review for environmental quality purposes, depending on what the general plan findings were for this location.
So I think what I'm going to interpret that set of comments as is that if anybody on the DIAS wants to suggest that we agendize an item to decide whether or not to do those things, or is it that the applicant can just go ahead and make the?
The applicant can apply. We have a provision for application for zoning change in a general plan amendment in our process.
Okay. So the applicants, you know, there are no guarantees, but you can apply for a review to get it changed. That doesn't preclude the DIAS from deciding they want to do something separately, but that is a separate issue. If people want to agendize that, we have a process for that as well.
Right. The other thing I wanted to mention, because I was told there's also something called the amendment of the text. The zoning would remain the same, but we just add that you can have this type of operation.
I think it's, you're talking about the scope of the change that's being requested, but it's really the same process.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
All right, so I will, maybe the bottom line is something you may want to follow up with staff directly to find details of the process and whatnot. Okay? All right, we have one other request for an item not on the agenda. That's from John Hoffman.
John Hoffman, Crestview Drive in San Carlos. You'll need to excuse my formality of dress. I just came from a painting project. Two things. First of all, Crestview Drive is becoming, or maybe has become, a raceway. And somebody with a red Ferrari and somebody else with a Shelby Cobra go up the hill faster than anybody should go down the hill. I believe that some sort of traffic calming, whether it's bumps or whatever, needs to be put in place. Now, the traffic commission that I would normally take this to has canceled their last two sessions, and that's why I'm appearing before you this evening. Please take this under consideration and do something that will provide greater safety for everybody that lives along Crestview. This applies to above Britain as well as below Britain. The second thing I want to say is a non sequitur, and that is going on the coattails of what was presented earlier. I think it's time that the city of San Carlos eliminate fees for the usage of city facilities for nonprofits. Please. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Is there anybody else who wishes to address the council on items not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to the next.
Can I ask one question? Can we, on John's question, can we ask the chief to look into the speeding issue over there? Is that something we can have the law enforcement, the sheriff's office, or the chief look into it?
I've made a note, and I'm planning to talk to him in the morning at our exec team meeting.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Adam. We'll move on to council communications and announcement. These are brief items. We have another section at the end of the agenda for longer items. So who has something I'd like to say? Adam, it looks like you do.
I actually have lots to say today on this one. Sorry, I'm trying to keep it quick. I had.
Ballgame scores.
No ballgame scores.
Please remember the brief part.
Yes, well, I had three external regional committee meetings that I attended. I just want to mention on two of them. One was on the Environmental Emergency Services Council. We had, I had requested, and there was a presentation to the county on the fire drill and the fire evacuation drill that we did in San Carlos that was done by the Redwood City Fire Department. That was well-received in terms of lots of questions, requests for more information from other areas in the county. So I just want to pass on the sort of leadership role that San Carlos is doing in this area. And then second, just wanted to mention three things from the CCAG meeting, which is the City and County Association of Governments. We had three presentations. One, I know that the folks that come in on the reach codes, the county presented on the reach codes as well with Peninsula Clean Energy. They also talked about the potential ban on straws and on plastics for food waste, for food in restaurants and grocery stores, and they are hoping that everyone will kind of hold off until January till the county has their ordinance in place to do that, and then are hoping that others will follow suit. And then lastly, we had a presentation on housing through, from 21 elements, on potential changes to the RENA numbers that we're expecting to get for the 2023-31 cycle, that they're talking potentially anywhere from 50% to a 200% increase in the number that the community, that the county will get. I guess Sacramento got a 50% increase, and then 200% increase for some parts of Southern California. And of note, we had previously, the county had done a subregion to be able to kind of work together and share data. A number of the cities have already come out saying that they're not interested in doing a subregion, some of the larger ones. So it was Redwood City, Foster City, South City, San Mateo, and Little Colma as well. And so they need to be contiguous to do a subregion, and the county needs to be on board. The county wasn't at that meeting. So there's some question marks that will have to be addressed in terms of the RENA numbers and kind of what that looks like moving forward.
Thank you, Adam. Sarah?
Thank you, Mark. I will just give two brief updates on meetings I attended the last couple of weeks. I'm on the board of commute.org, which works to incentivize commuting in our county. And right now, they're looking to spread the word that there is a guaranteed ride-home program. So if you are registered in their star database, and you commute into San Mateo County in the morning, and your ride falls through in the afternoon, they will reimburse you for your ride home. So it's like a commuter's insurance policy. If you're interested in that, please take a look. And I also represent San Carlos on the San Mateo County Library's Joint Powers Authority. And this morning, we went over the budget. And I'm pleased to announce, I think some people in our community will be thrilled to hear that there is a new Maker Mobile coming with all sorts of new maker activities, as well as a PlayMobile, which will be geared to children zero to five that will make stops at daycares and community events, and really work hard on reaching out to the little ones. So I'll make sure that they stop through our community, and stay tuned, they're going to launch in the spring of 2020. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Laura?
Thank you, Chair Olbert. A couple of meetings I attended on behalf of San Carlos, the Grand Boulevard Initiative this past week, which is about really the improvement of the El Camino Corridor, a 43-mile segment between San Jose and Daly City. And effectively, the takeaway is that the vision has been laid out, and kind of the work of the task force itself is completed, and it's going to be moving more into the work of planning departments and that type of thing to work with developers to realize that vision. And really, the focus is on key mobility issues and making that corridor more livable for pedestrian and bike-friendly. And there was also a presentation on the Manzanita Talks, which is a concept around getting large companies and cities to talk to each other to address the first and last mile with the goal of reducing the percentage of single occupancy vehicles and increase the use of shared transportation. So it sounds like lots of conversations happening in the community about that. And then Ron and I attended the Homes For All Steering Committee meeting this week, and they talked about the fact that we're moving into five new task forces for this year. One will be focused on educator housing, funding, second units, housing, and climate readiness, and to name a few. So again, more dialogue around increasing the affordable housing stocks in our community.
Thank you, Laura. Ron?
Thank you. Just a couple of things. I had the opportunity to attend a wildfire safety summit up at College of San Mateo a couple of Saturdays ago, and it was a very comprehensive overview of the wildfire threat, not only to the Bay Area here, but the state overall. Very educational, informative, and sobering morning, finding, just learning about our exposure to wildfire in California in general, and the Bay Area in particular. It also gave me the idea that there are a number of public safety issues that we as a county and a city are going to need some help with. So I'm in the process of arranging some meetings with our Assembly Representative Kevin Mullen and our State Senator Jerry Hill to address those safety concerns. And then secondly, I also happen to be on the Housing and Community Development Committee for the county. And at a recent meeting, we were fortunate to be able to award $29 million to affordable housing projects in San Mateo County. That's the largest amount of money I've ever been involved with, and a lot of it's come from, some from Measure K funds, but a lot of state fundings become available. It's very heartening to see that the county and many organizations really stepped up to provide affordable housing throughout the county. We're making some real progress. A lot of this money's going to create something like 1,000 to 1,200 new affordable housing options for our residents. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ron. I have two items to mention. At an earlier meeting, I walked my colleagues through a provision of California state law that was new to me about how it's possible for public agencies to fully be in compliance with the law, but actually enter into legal settlements that nobody in the public will ever know about unless they happen to ask about it, which of course, if they don't know about it, it's a little hard to know that you need to ask about. Since that time, I have had conversations, I've had a conversation with Senator Jerry Hill, bringing it to his attention. I'd have to say he, I don't want to put words in his mouth, but he was surprised as I was that it was part of the law. And he said he would look into it during this legislative calendar. That doesn't necessarily mean anything's going to happen with it, but I did appreciate his commitment to look into it. And I will be meeting with Kevin Mullen tomorrow to basically make the same pitch and try and get him on board for, at least trying to understand what the purpose of that provision of the law is, because it deeply disturbs me that there's actually a way for a public agency to be non-transparent on significant issues. The other thing I wanted to mention is, I've talked many times over the course of this year about the pending wave of very significant amounts of commercial development coming to San Carlos. And I learned something recently that basically heightens that in my mind, and really drives me to say, I wish that the council would take up the admittedly serious matter of revisiting our general plan. We, you know, I've talked before about how there is in the offing something on the order of 2 million square feet, if not more, of new commercial office space that's going to be built on the east side. To put that in context, that's more than double, or pardon me, that will more than double the first century's worth of development in San Carlos. We only have about 1,004 square feet of commercial space. What's even more driving, a driving force for me is it turns out that a big chunk of that property, probably the majority of the property of the projects that I'm aware of, things that are potentially going to be built on, is owned by a single company. They've all, they purchased basically an existing project, and they purchased two other big plots of land in San Carlos. I have nothing against the company per se. I think they're actually a decent company, but they are a big company committed to making big projects happen. So I think where earlier I would say things like, this is in the offing, I'd say it's more than in the offing. It's going to happen. And if we're okay with that, if we're okay with the impact it's going to have, no problem. If we think we might want to revisit what our rules are, then now's the time to do it, because if we don't do it now, we ain't going to be able to do it, period. I don't want to take any more time tonight talking about this. Anybody who's interested in learning more, please feel free to reach out to me, or you can read an op-ed that I wrote that should be published in the Daily Post, probably Wednesday or Thursday this week. So thank you. With that, we will move on to the consent calendar. These are items that the council approves en masse, generally without discussion. However, for my benefit of my colleagues, we do actually have two speaker cards for two different items on this consent calendar. So Greg, what I was thinking is that I would have the speakers come up and speak before we entertain a motion, just in case that changes what people want to move.
That sounds like good procedure.
All right, good. Then I will invite up Mindy Romanowski, who wishes to comment on item 8B, the minutes of our August 26 city council regular meeting.
Hi, good evening. Hi, good evening. Thank you for your time and your service. My name is Mindy Romanowski. I live just on the street at 927 Elm Street. I'm a partner with the law firm of Jorgensen, Siegel, McClure, and Flago, where I practice land use law and municipal law in Menlo Park. As you recall, I did come before this body on behalf of my client a few weeks ago, Bay Area Capital Partners, for your August 26 council meeting. They own property immediately adjacent to the 817 Walnut Street Affordable Housing Project that you approved. They do remain very supportive of the project, however, are concerned that the noise mitigations for the project have been overlooked in the approval documents because they're not memorialized. I respectfully therefore request that the council give direction on memorializing the noise mitigations. You did pull the item from consent, as is reflected in item 8B of your minutes, but the city attorney recommended that staff consider the request to update a resolution for the purpose of memorializing noise mitigations for the car lift system going in for the project. And while you removed the items from consent, you did not deny or approve the city attorney's recommendation, and so at this point, we just need to understand the intent of council. I guess I would respectfully request that the council consider the city attorney's recommendation to direct staff to consider either an updated resolution or other appropriate document to simply memorialize the noise mitigations associated with the project. We further request that this item be placed on an agenda in the immediate future as soon as possible, and that no building permits be issued for the project until the conditions are properly memorialized. Again, we really do support the project. We just want to make sure that the noise of the car lift system is attenuated appropriately to respect the neighborhood. Thank you so much for your time this evening.
Thank you. I'm going to deal with. I'm going to deal with this one before I have the second speaker come up. Greg, or Jeff, comments?
I think I'll start and just talk about what, I mean, I think the minutes that you're approving tonight is what's before you, and I think what's reflected in those minutes accurately reflect what I said that night. And we still are considering the two meeting minutes that were continued. So those aren't before you tonight. Just the August 26 minutes are before you tonight.
Okay. I guess the question I have, and others may have other questions, is it almost sounds like what we're being asked to do is not specifically related to the minutes per se, it's to revise an agreement or revise a resolution. And that's what I'm confused about, is the interaction between the minutes and the resolution. Hopefully, somebody can enlighten me.
Well, that's why, that's, without getting into specifics about that item, I did receive a letter from Ms. Romanowski today that made some of the same requests that she made before you tonight. And also, I, we are looking at the minutes to figure out if there is a procedure that can deal with the question. I'm not sure anything needs to be done at all at this point, but I think that's as far as I can want to go on it tonight, I think.
Well, in fact, by saying that, I think you've answered my unstated question, which is, this isn't really, that second part not related to the minutes is not an action item tonight. It is not an item on the consent calendar, this is why we cannot talk about it further. And would I be correct in saying that staff is considering whether or not to bring something back? And of course, the council always has the ability, if enough council members want to agendize something, they can do that.
That is generally correct, but procedurally, I think we need to follow our procedures. And it may be that what's being requested is not part of those regular procedures, but I am, just for the record, I am still evaluating that.
Fair enough. Okay, thank you. Did anybody else up here have any other questions or things? Okay. In that case, I will invite up our second speaker, who wishes to address us on Item 8E, the adopting a resolution approving the specs for the 2019 On Call Traffic Striping and Marking Project. That's Leroy Marad. Did I get your name right? I apologize if I didn't.
Leron.
Leron, thank you.
My handwriting is not the best. I should have been a doctor. And good evening, council members. I appeared before you about two months ago in regards to traffic on the 2300 block of Howard Avenue. At that meeting, you referred this item to the Transportation Commission, which then met last month to discuss this item. I am here to speak about the striping project and funding for it. I'm very much in support of the city funding striping projects, because what came out of the Transportation Commission meeting was that the Public Works Department will put additional striping on Howard Avenue, including marking crosswalks, which will be very important for safety of pedestrians and to hopefully mitigate some of the traffic that we have, including drivers who run stop signs. So I very much appreciate the work that our Public Works Department and its director, Mr. Stephen Machida, has done on this so far, and I wanted to make sure the council was aware of this. I do also want to point out, however, that this is not the end of, likely not the end of the issues we face on Howard Avenue with regards to traffic, drivers speeding, and drivers running stop signs. There's still likely going to be much work to be done, and I expect that you'll hear more from me and from other residents of Howard Avenue in the coming year after we see the impact of the striping. So I want to make sure that this stays top of mind for you and top of mind for our city and the Public Works Department to keep on looking for ways to mitigate traffic and keep the residents of Howard Avenue safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Leron. By the way, just as an aside, if you have not done so already, I suspect you have, I would encourage you to talk to Steve. There are processes in place for triggering reviews and actions that the council established several years ago, which may play into what you're looking to do.
Since I still have 30 seconds, let me just say that I actually met with Mr. Machida, and he was, I'm very thankful for the time that he took to meet with me and to make sure that we know about the options that are available. So thank you for that.
All right. Those are the only comment cards I had on the consent calendars, or anybody else who wishes to address items on the consent calendar? If not, I will entertain a motion from the dais.
Chair Olbert, I will move to approve the City Council Consent Calendar, Items A through K and Item L, adopting ordinance number 1551, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, amending San Carlos Municipal Code Title VIII, Health and Safety, consisting of modifications to Chapters 8.50.040 and 8.50.080. Traffic Impact Fee, exempting childcare centers serving the public from the Traffic Impact Fee.
There is a second? Motion and a second? Crystal, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes. And I apologize to my colleagues, I forgot to ask if anybody wanted to pull items, but apparently, nobody did, so.
Worth discussing.
Well, it pulled a discuss, that's right. All right, so the consent calendar passes. I'm actually going to, before we get into the next item, we're going to take a brief recess. We will adjourn for, say, five minutes and be back here shortly after nine. We will reconvene. Thank you for the patience of the folks involved with the public hearing item 9A, consideration of introducing an ordinance approving a zoning map amendment to rezone the project site at 1091 Industrial Road, APN 046151060, from Planned Industrial PD to General Commercial Industrial, GCI, and rescinding the planned development permit. Good evening, Al.
Good evening, Chair, and members of the City Council. This is a reset request of the zoning at 1091 Industrial Road from the existing planned development back to the general commercial industrial zone. To make the presentation, we have our principal planner, Lisa Costa-Sanders, and the applicants here to answer questions. Lisa.
Good evening, Lisa.
Good evening. So the subject site is just under 1.6 acres in area. It's located at the corner of Industrial Road and Britton Avenue. The site's currently developed with a 40,000-square-foot, two-story office commercial building, and the site's bordered by Pulgas Creek and is near the Highway 101 on and off ramps. City Council approved a hotel development in 2017, and later approved an amended project in early 2018 to increase the development to allow a total of 173 guest rooms. The entitlements included rezoning the site from general commercial industrial to planned development, and approving the associated planned development plan, as well as design review, a transportation demand management plan, and the mitigated negative declaration. The zoning code requires that planned development districts also include a planned development plan. So that planned development plan is essentially the hotel site plan, floor plans elevation. So it establishes the zoning criteria for the site, that is, developing that specific project. No other uses are allowed except as authorized under the planned development plan. That plan, the planned development plan by code expires after two years if it's not used or a building permit is pulled. However, the planned development zoning does not expire, so that is still in place. The hotel developer determined that the previously approved project was too costly to build, and they decided to sell the property. The current property owner requests the city rezone the site from planned development back to the former zoning designation of general commercial industrial. The applicant also requests that the city rescind the approved planned development plan that's due to expire January of 2020. The property owner plans to submit an application to develop the site in compliance with the new general commercial industrial regulations. And that new building would require a design review and approval of a transportation demand management plan, as well as the appropriate CEQA evaluation by the Planning Commission. Just to compare the zoning designation that's currently in place with the request to go back to the GCI, any new development then would be required to comply with the GCI zoning regulations. This would result in a lower height limit, increased setback from the creek, lower floor area ratio, and reduced building signage. Specifically, the hotel was approved with 166,520 square feet, and the GCI zoning designation would allow a maximum of 139,000 square feet. The hotel was also approved at seven stories, and any new development would likely be in the three-story range. We've evaluated the rezoning request and determined that it is exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act, as it is consistent with the general plan environmental impact report. And we did mail, as well as publish public notification of this hearing, and we have not received any comments. As I indicated, the applicant is here this evening, and I would be happy to try to answer any of your questions.
Thank you, Lisa. First question before I proceed. Greg, the, there may not be any, but if there is, take public comment before or after closing the public hearing.
Before you close the public hearing, you should take public comment.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody who wishes to address the council on this item? I don't have any speaker cards. Seeing none, questions from the dais. Adam?
Lisa, thank you.
Sorry, sorry. Hold on, Adam.
Move to a closed public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Crystal, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
And Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Thank you. Now, Adam.
Oh, thank you, Chair. I just had a question, Lisa, on the GCI regulation on the creek bank. So it would be 25 feet, and can you just tell me what the determination, what planning, what would cause them to want to change that or limit that to back to 10 feet or a different number?
Sure, so the current top of creek setback is 25 feet. The Planning Commission does have the ability to approve a different creek setback through an exception process. So that is still able to proceed in the future. If you've noticed, the site out there and the conditions right now, it's a parking lot paved right up to the edge of the top of creek bank, and part of it is a concrete creek bank, and there's a small section that's a little more natural. So it's pretty well improved in today's condition. And what we'd like to do is work with this developer, any future developer, to see if we can get more of a riparian environment out there, but it may not be the full 25 feet. We'll need to see what makes sense at the site.
Okay. And thank you for that, because I think for me, that's something that I'm interested in seeing that sort of repaired back to more natural state, I think for, I think there's a potential along that whole corridor to do something with the creek, so that would be a piece of it. Thank you.
Laura?
Thank you, Chair Olbert. So I had met the developer over coffee, and the way, the idea of the project was presented to me that it was going to be lower profile than what was previously there before, and I just want to confirm, what you're saying is that that's the case between what's currently in place now and the GCI, is that correct?
Correct. So currently in place, allowed a height up to 84 feet to top a tower. 80 feet was top of parapet, and under the GCI regulations, it would limit the main building height to 50 feet. There is a provision to screen mechanical equipment, so that could go to 66 feet, but it does also need come with setbacks. So it's more at the center of the building. So you're comparing 80 feet to 50 feet?
Right. So the overall form and total square footage of the project would be much less than what would be there if it were a hotel.
That's correct. The total square footage also reduces from 2.6 floor area of the total site area to 2.0.
Thank you.
Ron?
Thank you, Chair Olbert. Lisa, I'm just looking at the, I don't really mind the height that much, it's just that when you do the math, the three-story building is almost 17 feet per story. Is that what normal commercial feet per story is? I mean, I thought it was like 13 or 14. I'm just curious.
Yeah, some of the life science users want that taller height ability, and also, some of the buildings we're seeing may have enclosed parking, so those are some of the factors to take into consideration. But it could be between, I think on average, it's more like 15 feet per story.
Right, right. And when you say enclosed parking, how does that affect the height? Is it because they're adding it on top?
It would be within the building.
Within the building?
Right.
Okay. So it could be like a first story or something? Okay, all right. Thank you.
Sarah?
Thank you, Chair. I know that it's still very early in the process, but I'm wondering if either you or the applicant could speak a little bit to the project, what we're looking at. I know it's life sciences, but is there a little more color for the public to understand what this new project might be?
That item is not before us, so I'm not sure how much the city attorney would like us to discuss it.
I think that sometimes gets to be problematic when we're, but if, I mean, conceptually, I think what we're hearing, and when I read the staff report, is it's going to be an office building, and it'll have to comply with the zoning requirements, the new zoning, reverting back to the old zoning.
Okay. Thank you.
I just had one question, but before I ask it, I too met with the applicant, I think a couple of months ago now. It was good conversation, appreciated all the information they were able to provide to me. It won't be affecting how I view and act on this particular item, but I did find it helpful. So I appreciate them taking the time to do that. The one question I had is, I appreciated your zoning comparison chart, Lisa. Is there anything where, when we revert from PD to GCI, is there anything where GCI is actually more liberal, for lack of a better term?
It's more what? I'm sorry?
Allows you to do something bigger, or, in other words, all the comparisons you've used here, which were very helpful, basically say it's a tighter constraint when you go back to GCI. I'm asking, is there anything that goes the other way?
Yeah, and so what the planned development zoning did was it says, you could pretty much do anything the underlying GCI zoning allowed, except for these items. You can have a higher height, a higher floor area.
Always adds to it.
But then what it also said is, on the condition that you build the project that's attached as the planned development plan.
Got it.
So once that planned development plan expires, or somebody doesn't want to build it, I'm kind of stuck with this PD zoning that can't be implemented.
Right. Got it.
Somebody could only build that hotel concept.
Got it. Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. I also just wanted, as a comment, to echo what I believe I heard Adam say, which is, anything that we can do to repair, enhance the riparian environment there, I would appreciate that.
Great, thank you.
And, you know, to me, that's, again, just speaking for myself, that's worth trading off something else, if I had to look at that kind of trade-off.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Mark, I just wanted to add for the public that I too met with the developer team and appreciated the information that was provided. It won't sway me one way or the other, but it was nice to learn a little bit more.
Are there any other comments along those lines that colleagues would like to make?
Also, I met with them as well, so.
I did as well.
Okay. Fair enough. Adam, your light's on. Is there something else? Okay. All right. In that case, I will entertain a motion.
I move to introduce ordinance number?
1552.
1552, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Carlos approving a zoning map amendment to rezone the project site at 1091 Industrial Road, APN 046-151-060, from planned development to general commercial industrial, and rescinding the planned development permit.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further comment or discussion? Hearing the call for none, Crystal, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Councilmember Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
And Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Motion carries. That brings us to any additional council communications and announcements? I'll just mention in passing here that I was surprised to see that we actually didn't have any items for adding to future agendas on this meeting. That's got to be the first time since we adopted that new policy that that's happened. So people need to sharpen their pencils, or we'll end up having no meetings. Adam?
I just wanted to mention, I had a chance to go to the pasta and bingo dinner, and Ron was there as well with the ACC and the Rotary, which is a great event, and had a chance to at least go to part of it, and then my daughter was performing the same night at Devil's Canyon singing, so I only got, didn't play bingo, but I got to go check out the crowd.
I'm glad to hear that. Laura?
Yeah, I just wanted to make staff aware, and you probably already are, that Caltrans has SB 1 grant funds for safe routes to school, for transit planning studies, and transportation demand management funds available, so that might be a program to look into in light of our, one of our strategic goals.
our, one of our strategic goals, which is around mitigating traffic congestion and improving Safe Routes to School.
Thank you, Laura. Ron?
Thank you. I just wanted to point out that it's always great to visit city facilities, especially when they serve food. The ACC Pasta Feed was one of them that Adam mentioned. The other was the Ice Cream Social at the museum a couple of weeks ago. You serve ice cream, I will show up. Thank you.
Is that independent of the kind of ice cream, or should I test that?
Just ice cream.
All right. Any comments from staff?
Nothing this evening, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Jeff. Then we will move to adjourn the meeting, and I'm going to adjourn the meeting in recognition of congratulating Laura and Kathy on, what was it, 39 years?
29.
I'm old.
29.
I slip digits sometimes. 29 years. Congratulations of 29 years of wedded bliss.
Thank you.
Got it, Mark.